Alright, thank you for, once again, for joining us tonight. In case of an emergency, we have exits located out in the back, and we have exits located out in the front here, if anything were to happen. Alright, I'm gonna turn things over to Ms. Markowski.
Thank you. Good evening. On behalf of the Northwood Sixth Route Team, students and aims get speech. Mrs. Jenny Ames, Mrs. Julie Feige, and I would like to present, along with Mrs. Beaman, the winners of our Toy Hall of Fame contest. This is a beloved presentation and project that students participate in annually. Mrs. Colleen and I often get the pleasure and honor of judging the overall contest. So this evening, you're gonna see the Kids' Choice winners, and you're also going to see the overall winners present their presentations. But at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Feige and Mrs. Ames to tell you a little bit more about the project.
Alright, well, to give you a little background, we've been doing this project for about 25 years in some way, shape, or form. It's adjusted as the curriculums change. But basically, the current project, it starts with that each group is trying to get a toy that has not been selected into the Toy Hall of Fame. And in order to do that, it has to meet four criteria. The toy has to have longevity, which means it's been around for multiple generations. It has to be, have icon status and be widely recognized. It has to foster learning, creativity, and discovery, and it also has to have changed the world of play and be innovative in some way. And so, we've had this relationship with the Strong Museum, and the students really try to find a toy that's going to meet this criteria. So this is an interdisciplinary unit where we meld a variety of things. It is an ELA project that allows us to teach argumentative writing skills as well as presentation skills. It allows us to use social studies and teaching research skills. It also embeds the NYPD approaches to learning, including self-management skills. They have to really manage their time. Research, again, as well as communication, and the ability to work in groups and be social. So it does a lot. Oh, and we also embed technology. So it really encompasses many things at one time. We get a lot of bang for our buck. And basically, the process, we start with that each group picks a toy that they're interested in. They conduct research, looking through nonfiction texts. Some we provide, some they find themselves. And then, we start writing scripts using some flair, some excitement. We try to pick fun themes and getting in all the argumentative styles. With this is a precursor to our argumentative unit, which we are currently in now, because we did this right before Christmas break. So we might be a tad rusty, but we've been doing the best we can to get it back on shape. In the end, we also create slide shows for the backdrop, and this is one of my favorite things to do. I think they learn a whole lot more than just economics through the process of this entire project. Like Melissa said, there were seven groups, there were seven toys, and they really were all amazing. And to make it authentic, they do present to two audiences. The first audience is the students, and at the end, the students do the Students' Choice Award, and they vote for which one was the most persuasive or really proved the point. And then, our second show is for our families, and we have our panel of judges, which, like we said, Melissa and Kristen have been part of, and they do it from like, how well did they argue the point? We also have Jason Crane as a judge, and he looked at it from the technology component. And then, we have someone from the Strong Museum, Christopher Bench, who comes in, who's the Vice President of Collections, and he really talks about which one met the criteria the best. And so, it's just an amazing project. And without further ado, we're going to have our first approval on the Kids' Choice Award, and that will be bought there.
We have a four...
Guys, come on, we have to make a toy. And Kaylee, can you focus?
Yeah, toys.
Uh huh.
I already told you, the choice is clear.
It has to be hashtag.
It has to be the hashtag? Don't you mean it has to be the hashtag?
Get it? Anybody?
No?
Alright. This is a long project.
Bop it, twist it.
Kaylee, that is so distracting. But I need to tell the teacher.
Well, I didn't. The game is life.
Well, this project's gonna be the life of me. Alright, never mind.
Isn't the game of flags already in? What about Monopoly? Mr. Potato Head? Sleepy?
They're already in.
Sorry. Well, we'll have to pick one soon. You got to be missing something. Bop it, twist it.
Aw, man.
Kaylee.
What? You guys are always getting mad at me.
No, I mean Kaylee, you're a genius.
You sure about that? Adriana, not fun. That's her, you're a genius?
Yeah, you are. It's been in front of us the entire time!
Well, maybe more like in front of Kaylee the entire time.
Okay, somebody tell me what's going on.
Kaylee, it's in your hands now.
What do you mean?
Bop it!
That's our toy.
And innovation? Longevity? Icon status?
And the learning needed for the Toy Hall of Fame!
Wow, who do I trust to be so useful?
You're welcome. Don't get too full of yourself. We still have to prove it to our panel of judges.
Well, let's not waste any time.
Wait, I have the perfect chant for our presentation. Hear me out. Bop it, twist it, pull it!
Ugh. Now, it's not fair.
Come on, guys, we'll deal with that later.
Okay, we have to convince Mrs. Feige and Mrs. Ames to let us use Bop it for our project.
That is a complete contradiction.
Let's start with innovation, since Mrs. Feige and Mrs. Ames, that's the hardest one to prove.
There is a basic toy even.
It all started with the innovative ideas of Dan Klitzner.
Yeah, wait a second. Isn't that the guy that made the zany remote controls in the shape of things like a surfboard and enough pizza?
Yeah, and he made a game, and when he bopped it, it changed the channels.
When Dan heard the quote, "Watch the kid knock a toy," he made him think, "What if the toy controlled the kid?"
Isn't it a real idea of Bop it game?
Bop it, twist it, pull it!
Now, it's not fair. The toy was brought up by the escape corporation, Milton Bradley, and the idea of the toy controlling the kid was a hit, but ultimately that's a contradiction.
Look, thumbs!
Yeah, Adriana, we've all seen thumbs before.
Right, but just think about it. Most video games require just thumbs, but not Bop it. It uses larger physical movement, a selling point for good old mom and dad.
Yeah, it's all for being the first tactile and gesture-based electronic game.
It does a lot for you, doesn't it?
Wait, you guys are forgetting my favorite, most important part. Bop it incorporates humor. Who doesn't love a toy that teases and laughs at you for making mistakes?
Of course, that's your favorite part, Adriana.
I do agree. It helps keep the game competitive and light-hearted at the same time.
Bop it. Yeah, let the rest.
Oh, wait, that was quick. What's our next criteria? I think it makes sense to jump to Bop that's longevity.
Oh, first launched in 1997, making it 27 years old!
27? Wow, that's old.
There have been so many versions of Bop it in the 27-year timeframe.
But what you want today is the original, right?
Yeah, it was created in 1906. There are three actions. Bop it, twist it, pull it! Come on, you're gonna give an adventure.
My personal favorite was the Bop extreme made in 1998.
Yeah, that was so cool. It had the original reactions plus two more.
Click it and spin it.
It also increased the act score from 100 to 250 points.
That's a good point, Evan.
During the 27 years that Bop had been around, they have made several different versions of the game to keep it fresh.
I love Bop Extreme 2 that came out with 2002 with its updated colors and added audio control.
What about on the download? In 2007, this version ran at 15 levels, allowing players to record their own voices and download music and sounds.
I'm gonna need that one. I love the sound of my own voice.
I've been had a shirt change over the years and definitely need to warm up to make it to the Toy Hall of Fame.
Okay, good enough. I think we're ready to pitch our idea to our teachers.
Not so fast, we have two criteria left. Let me check my list.
Of course, you have a list.
Okay, innovation, check, check. Longevity done. Next is icon status.
Didn't the Bop extreme have a wide range of three years?
Well, they thought that, but they underestimated it. It became even more popular in its second selling year.
Yeah, and the Bop extreme was even more popular than the original and even outsold it by 50%.
That Bop extreme was a luxury video in 2005.
If you think that's iconic, Bop is so popular that has been featured in many hit TV shows. Didn't The Simpsons make a spin-off of Bop it? I think it was called... I don't get it.
Bop is an helicopter that's been sold worldwide around the world.
That's true. Over 30 million Bop its have been sold worldwide. It's even been released in different languages so that people can play all over the world.
I wish I could say Bop it, twist it, pull it in different languages. Shucks, I knew I should've paid more attention and low.
I think we're free if you're not doing that. I'd prefer to attempt French.
Whatever it is and however you say it, Bop it is truly evident.
Alright, guys, we have all nine criteria approved. That one wouldn't be learned. Where do we start? There's so much to go over. First of all, play Bop it should use hand-eye coordination.
Doesn't it also increase your memory?
Yeah, it increases the speed and memorization processing and reading skills. Studies show that play Bop it can help reduce age-related memory decline.
You know what else Bop it teaches? Following directions. You're wanna talk, remember earlier. Hey, remember, I'm the genius. Anyways, the goal is saying Bop it for players to complete it.
To follow.
To follow virtual directions to complete the three actions.
Bop it, twist it, pull it!
Who's off track now?
I'm not gonna stop until you guys actually do it.
Back to learning. Bop it also increases audio processing. That involves active listening. Players have to pay attention and focus. Yeah, and the longer you play, the more difficulty comes. The directions keep moving faster and faster.
Bop it, twist it, pull it! Did you catch that? I bet you didn't.
I think we did it. We proved that Bop it has the learning needed for the Toy Hall of Fame. Two-minute warning. Oh, no, we only have two minutes left! Guys, don't worry. I think we're ready to present our idea to Mrs. Feige and Miss Thing.
Are you sure we nailed the criteria?
Back to the list. Do we prove innovation?
Yes!
What about longevity?
Absolutely!
Finally, learning?
Without a doubt!
Icon status?
Check, check!
I think we found our toy.
And just remember the genius that came up with that idea. For old times' sake. Bop it, twist it, pull it! Who's with me?
We're with you! Bop it, twist it, pull it!
Mrs. Feige, we're ready!
Now, we have the winner of the Judges' Choice Award, and that was Polly Pocket.
Welcome to NW News. I'm your host, Jenny Johnson. Tonight, going for a treat. Many of you may remember the iconic toy Polly Pocket. This year, it's celebrating its 35th anniversary. We have two of our reporters on location to give this group a little domestication. Xander, can you hear me?
Sure can, Jenny. I'm here in sunny California in front of Mattel headquarters. I'm just moments away from interviewing the CEO of Mattel, the maker of Polly Pocket.
We'll be reporting to you in that interview later in the hour. Beauty of the Madeline is on location in Littleton, Massachusetts. Madeline, are you there?
Yes. I'm in front of a new Airbnb that just opened. This is just any Airbnb. Well, I should say Polly Pocket has been supersized here in Littleton.
I really hope the Strong Museum, located in New York, is listening tonight. It sounds like we have the perfect nominee for the next toy to the National Toy Hall of Fame. I think our people will agree that Polly Pocket has the longevity, icon status, learning and discovery, as well as innovation needed for induction. We'll be right back after this short commercial break to give this extraordinary story.
Well, normally, eight commercials apply, but it's not noted, but there'd be a Polly Pocket commercial.
Wow, I'm to those Polly Pocket on everyone's holiday list. Welcome back to special edition of NW News, where we're celebrating everything Polly, with a special focus on raising awareness of the devastating fact that Polly Pockets have not yet been inducted in the National Toy Hall of Fame. I'm sending it over to Xander, our special correspondent, who goes to the exclusive interview with the CEO of Mattel.
Thanks, Jenny. I'm here with the known credits, the proud leader of the Mattel Corporation. I have questions that have been on everyone's mind. Do Polly Pockets have the longevity to be in the National Toy Hall of Fame?
We've been at this project for a while. Yes, Polly Pockets definitely has the longevity needed to make the cut.
How long have they been on?
Well, they first started being sold in stores in 1990. However, Polly Pockets was actually created in 1983, when Chris Williams invented the Chinese doll.
How do Bloomberg Toys say?
Impressive, you did your research. In 1989, Bloomberg Toys located in the United Kingdom began making the first Polly Pocket.
When did Mattel take over production?
In 1998. They kept the spirit of Polly Pocket alive, but had new details and designs for a new generation.
As our viewers know, Polly Pockets are celebrating the 35th anniversary here. Hasn't Mattel made any changes?
For a while, they've slowly, largely, done the original version, but in 2018, Mattel re-watched the Polly Pocket to be similar in size to the 1993.
Wow, Polly Pockets had a quite long history down at the toy market, giving it the longevity to make a shoo-in for the Hall of Fame. Xander, Google Jordan, you see. Let's head over to Littleton, Massachusetts, to see what's available. Madeline has a store across there. Madeline, thank you, Jenny. Or am I eye-catching on me? Or am I seeing what I think I'm seeing?
Yep, that's right. I am standing in front of a life-size Polly Pocket place that the people can rent and sustain for the night. I'm here with Airbnb's representative, Bobby Benson. Bobby, can you tell us more about this unique Airbnb?
Newers may remember that she stole the summer's party Polly Pocket.
Ew, I remember! I had that one!
She sounds excited. We'll hear more from her later.
We decided that if every child could step inside a Polly Pocket room, and if every child could step inside a Polly Pocket room, it was created in a 42-foot life-size room.
How much is a closet staying here?
Only $89 per person for a night.
$89 is a unique amount.
$89 is in honor of 1980's Polly Pockets for first years.
Thanks, Bobby. I'd like to talk to a family who is currently staying in the Airbnb. This is Adriana, her seven-year-old daughter, Juliana. What made you want to rent this Airbnb?
I used to love playing with Polly Pockets when I was little. I started buying them for little Juliana, but she was by the old enough. Staying here is so nostalgic to it.
Do you still buy the old sets?
Yeah, I've been collecting them for years. Some of my vintage sets are over $1,000, but of course, I'd never sell them. They're priceless to me.
Juliana, I can tell you're very excited.
I am. This is a dream come true. I can't wait to try on the Polly Pocket dresses and accessories. You know, not only do I love playing on Polly Pockets, but they're also really cool to watch on TV.
You know you're a true icon when you hit the big screen. Polly Pockets are on Netflix, right?
Oh, yes. They have two animated TV series, and there are seven seasons. I can't wait for season eight to come out.
Netflix definitely wouldn't pick up Polly Pockets if it wasn't a password. But Polly has also taken the other popular brands, isn't that right?
Yep, they recently teamed up with Barbie to create Barbie Dream House Compact.
And Harry Potter. I put the Hogwarts compact on my Christmas list, and there are seven scenes from Sorcerer's Stone inside.
I'm sure Polly Pockets will make the winter many Christmas scenes this Halloween season. Well, you heard it here first. Polly Pockets are definitely iconic. Back to you, Jenny.
I hope they're still accepting us making that Airbnb. It looks amazing. Let's send it back to California and check with Xander.
Thanks, Jenny. For viewers just tuning in, I'm back with the known credit. Mr. Cranes, how are Polly Pockets in a better?
What set Polly Pockets parts from other toys is inside? A small must occur anywhere.
Yeah, isn't that your tagline, small but right?
Sure, Xander, play anywhere, anytime.
Many of our viewers often describe Polly Pockets as a little piece of magic.
Oh, yeah, each of our 350 sets all have magical elements hiding inside. There are blue parts, secret doors, and very detailed designs.
Sounds very innovative to me. Thank you for your time.
We're coming up to the top of the hour. Let's check back at Littleton for one more update. Madeline? Yes, Jenny. Looks like Polly Pockets could be headed straight for the Toy Hall of Fame. But I do want to know, does it have the learning, creativity, and discovery? I think my guess will be answer that question.
It definitely expands imagination and creativity. I love putting together the different theme sets to make it my own stories and adventures. I have the beach, the castle, and several houses. I use them all in my storytelling.
Oh, that is so important, staying age when many kids are stuck behind a video screen. Do they help teach any other skills?
They definitely help teach fine motor skills. You need precise movements to put the clothes on those small little dolls.
I love using them to play with all my friends. Even, some sets have magnets in them, so you can connect them.
Sounds like you're really developing your social skills.
I am.
So I think we have an answer to your question, Jenny. Polly Pockets definitely inspires learning and creativity. Great work, reporters. This has been a very special edition of NW News. Polly Pockets take you by storm in its 35 years that has the longevity, icon status, learning creativity, and discovery, as well as innovation that the National Toy Hall of Fame is looking for. Make sure to head to the Strong Museum website to cast a vote for the next toy of the year. I'm sure Polly Pockets will be a favorite. I'm Jenny Johnson, signing off. Until next time, happy holidays!
Thank you so much. Great job, guys!
Administrative reports, Dr. Kusor.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. I want to start out by thanking and recognizing our students and staff who presented this evening. Couldn't echo more the compliments of the multidisciplinary work that happens. That's some really great teaching and learning that's happening, so greatly appreciate their efforts and their time here tonight. So I hope everybody had a restful and enjoyable holiday season. We welcome back our staff, and I want to thank them for their continued efforts to engage our students in meaningful learning as we start the new school year. Something that I'm always impressed about our district is the level of instruction that's happening. We have a good time, and we get close to the holiday, we certainly celebrate. But as soon as we got back from the recess, we hit the ground running as I visited the different schools. And one of the things I noticed as well with the two weeks off this year, I felt like, and a little, but that our staff is well-rested. And often, the people won't seem as rested, but they definitely seem a little more rested this year. So as a new state requirement, districts must provide adequate cooling for instructional spaces during the excessive heat days. So that's something you may have seen in the news, and we've updated you in some of our Friday messages. So we're working as a team, just exploring. Our goal is to continue to maintain quality instruction in comfortable areas, so we'll be meeting with the Teacher's Association as well. There are some different parts to that. You take the reading from the center of the room, six feet off the ground. It can't be a thermometer from the dollar store. We're gonna look at some appropriate technology. And really, our goal is to keep kids in school because we know that that's the best place for them. So it'll be interesting as that goes into law, working with the association to make sure that we can meet everybody's needs, and most importantly, the students' and the families' needs. So just wanted to kind of give you an update. We'll have updates on our progress, and I can share in the coming months. Also, Google, Google has decided that they're not interested in signing agreements required by Ed Law 2D. So what does that mean for our district? It means potentially, and I say potentially because there's still some time to figure these things out. We don't believe that Google will sign Ed Law 2D agreements, but it may turn to the point where we have to discuss not being able to use YouTube, not being able to use Google Search, not being able to use the Google Suite. That's difficult for us because we have really embraced Google, Google Classroom, and some other teaching assistants as well, Google Translate. So that is a concern of ours. It would be a major shift for the district. So we'll see. Things may happen. Google may come along and agree to that, they may not. But I just kind of wanted to give you that first update about that because much more work to be done around that topic, and hopefully, we can figure some things out because I know that'll be difficult for the district. And today was the State of the State. So one of the things that was covered in the media yesterday that wasn't mentioned in the State of the State today is the fact that there is a pending cellphone ban for students during instructional time. So just want to let you know that we've done our research around the negative impact of cellphones during instructional time. The Office of Instruction has some plans along with the district to educate our parents, educate our staff as well. Tomorrow, we're gonna start to look at what no cellphones will look like, and we will keep you updated. Later this month, we're supposed to hear from the governor. I've heard that it's not going to be so specific. So it's gonna be a ban on cellphones during instructional time. And then, local school districts will be able to figure out what that means for them. So clearly, we know Greece, Rochester City, they have been the leaders in the forefront of cellphone ban. So certainly, we have colleagues and folks on the Board of Education who know very well what works and what doesn't work, and we're certainly going to pull off of that. We definitely know that it will take a great communication plan as well with our families. We'll also have to put practices in place for what happens when that is violated and what that looks like. So once again, just wanted to bring that up to this table. We're working on it. We'll keep you updated as we move forward. I do think it's a good thing, but I also realize and understand that in today's rule of connectivity, we may have some parents and families that are concerned. But I remember back when many of us were in school. If you need to get ahold of your child, you call the main office. So there are practices that have been established and been in place for a long time, but certainly, we will get some input, and we will keep you up to date, and you'll be a part of that process as well. And then, next Monday, we pause to celebrate the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And as we enjoy the day off, I always ask people to reflect on his commitment to justice, equity, and peace. And that's everything I have for you.
Hi, what question? With the temperature, is there a range, like a low and a high? Or is it just a high threshold?
There is, there's always been a low. And the high is...
At 82 degrees, you're gonna have to start taking some corrective measure, which is like turning off lights, shutting blinds, things of that nature. And then, at 88 degrees, you're gonna have to have a plan to provide some sort of relief by maybe rotating a classroom in air-conditioned space or something like that.
The low is 65.
So the good news is that we do have heat plans in place. We have a, thanks to Adam and all of his leadership, we have a long-term plan for air conditioning the entire district. That's going to take time. It's a very expensive endeavor. But we have made progress. Some of the capital projects that's currently taking place is going to air condition additional areas. Our high school is 95% air-conditioned. Our elementary schools, for example, students who presented from Northwood, we have quite a few large areas that are air-conditioned. All of the cafeterias are air-conditioned. So we're in a real good place as far as our principal is having a heat plan where we rotate students and staff through air-conditioned areas. So there is really... So, but once again, we want to make sure that we can sit down with the association, we can educate the community. In worst-case scenario, I guess, if we had a total scorcher, and we were on, we would probably have looked at cafes, at least. So we want to avoid having to inconvenience families, and we know the best place for students are in the classrooms learning, so we'll keep you updated on that as well.
Yeah, I just have a question on the Google. Was there any communication, like I have an idea why, why they aren't going to even consider it? I mean, they'll lose lots of business if all the businesses...
They may, I don't know. I think... Littleton moved to the Google Suite early, and a lot of schools use Google, but a lot of schools also use Microsoft. And I just feel that they think that they don't need to accommodate. They're not too worried about that customer loss, and the concern is about selling data. So that's a concern. The adults, and this is for minors, so adults can consent, The adults, and this is for minors, so adults can consent, so adults in the district can continue to use those platforms. But where it's going to be challenging is we have teachers who have put years of planning into Google Classrooms and different things like that. So I don't know the answer, why Google is not willing to sign off on it, I guess, and we talked about it the other morning, because of how lucrative it is to sell new data.
Thank you.
Ms. Plink.
Just a couple of updates on things we've discussed so far this year and split through where we are. We're getting closer to our ID visits, so as you might recall, this is a reauthorization year for all three of our programs, BYU, NYPD, and TP. We will have evaluators from the ID onsite, March 4th through March 7th. They'll be visiting schools to make some classroom visits and a variety of different meetings. And just a reminder to mark your calendar, you're available for March 6th at 8:00 a.m. in Dr. Kusor's office, who will be leading the Board of Education and School Leadership to meet with ID and talk about next of our perspectives. Another update on our reading program at the elementary level, at the end of this month, we'll be welcoming Jan Markins, who is one of the two authors we've been working with over the course of the last year. Both she and Karen Gates are the co-authors of Shifting the Balance, Bringing the Science of Reading into the Balance Literacy Classroom. She'll be joining us here for three days in Hilton to tour classrooms and visit a variety of different components of the ELA program in classrooms 8 through 6, with Karen, Philman, and Ellen Sheen, principals. And our goal here is to gather a comprehensive understanding of where we currently are in our literacy instruction in the district, consult with a professional on the best next steps. As you know, the ELA literacy blog is multifaceted, and so whether we do vocabulary next or brain instruction next, and to learn from her and her wealth of knowledge across hundreds of school districts within the United States, will be a great asset to the district. We're hoping this process will help us to maximize our resources, leverage our strength, and prioritize our next steps. On a related note, last Tuesday, I attended the statewide webinar on the P3 Best Practices Literacy Guide. That was a statewide mandatory webinar. All districts had to send representatives to BOCs to watch that together. This guideline, these guidelines offer a comprehensive framework, leverages the practices of the sciences of reading, and allows us to understand the evidence-based best practices implementation of that. So we're going to use this guide not only to, as a guidance for the practices we could be using in our classroom, but it also contains a self-assessment measure. That self-assessment measure can be a practical tool for us to use to ensure that our literacy instruction aligns with the mandates of education law, Section 818. And that's going to be the need for school districts to sign an attestation by September 1st of 2025, that their curriculum and instruction are aligned to best practices, aligned to the science of reading. After going through the self-assessment tool on Tuesday, they'll be very confident with the shifts that we're making at the elementary level, have us primed and ready to be able to answer those attestation questions. They're released in February, we'll be able to look at them then, and then we have until September to respond to those at the portal. And then lastly, we wrapped up our ELA program evaluation, that was a K-12 program evaluation, last week, with the creation of a five-year action plan for moving our K-12 ELA program towards the desired state for curriculum instruction and assessment. And later this spring, we'll be sharing final support of education and also recommendations for next steps. Got any answer, any questions? We haven't forgot about man, we overview a whole bunch of man programs this week so far, real little meeting, so all the updates for you, beginning of March, around average of those programs.
All right, Mr. Dale.
So you might have remembered that over the past few years, we've done a new staff survey. So we look back at the end of June, when we were actually doing quite a bit of hiring for our hourly staff. And so we took a kind of a snapshot in time, anyone hired from June 17th until now, received a new staff survey. I'm anticipating, sharing those results with you over the next two weeks in my administrative update, but I'll also try to develop a PowerPoint for you, just to kind of give you some highlights and compare, compared to last year, or even previously, the third year. But you know, some of you might be, just to remember, what did we ask them? We asked about their overall experience, how are they doing as an overall experience? How was their onboarding process? You might remember we spent some time kind of correcting and looking at those. We asked for some more in-depth details. For example, we asked if someone read something below, what would they suggest for improving it? So we got some great feedback, because that's for me, what it's all about is improving. Did the job description match the role that they've currently worked in for the past six months? Again, this is interesting, because what we want to make sure is that our postings, our hiring process, and then the work is in alignment with what we set up first. And so I think, you know, that was good information to also capture, and some of the results are just great, and some of the feedback is great. We anticipate sharing that with, you know, with the administrative team and the directors of their departments, so that they can make some action plans and correct. Some of, you know, if we get negative feedback, we'll still share. But the last couple, I just wanted to share, do they have the materials to do their job? And we ask this from teachers, to cleaners, to administrators, because one of the things we want to make sure is that we put a great deal of focus over the past couple of years in making sure that people have the supplies necessary to do their jobs. We've made a lot of changes when it comes to principals, you know, getting ready and preparing a budget, knowing that they have had and replaced quite a few new staff members. So that's an area that I'm certainly looking at. And then lastly, you might have remembered that over the past four years, sometimes people had indicated, you know, hey, I'm not really comfortable approaching my supervisor. So that's a question we had, is in your day-to-day work, if you have a question, are you comfortable approaching your supervisor? I can tell you that the initial response is that we improved on last year's results, and I was thrilled with last year's results. So that, for me, is one of those culture pieces, because if people are comfortable asking their supervisor a question, that, for me, is really like we're headed in the right direction. So I'm, again, very, very pleased. And then lastly, one of the final questions was, you know, if this is about recruiting and retaining, what other suggestions might you have to retain employees in the central school district? So again, great feedback already, and I'm happy to share the results with you in two weeks, that are next quarter. I'll try to send you a PowerPoint or something at a time. It won't be a separate presentation before my administrative update, so that's good news. Lastly, I also wanted to let you know, you might remember that we track hourly employees' time in Excel spreadsheets. This is a practice that Adam developed many years ago, and it was just a temporary fix, Adam.
One year, one year.
One year.
It's lasted about 15 years.
Yeah, I was going to say, as we go into our 16th year with this temporary fix, I can tell you that we met with the union leadership today, we explained the progress that we've made so far in testing this hourly, you know, component within frontline's time and attendance module. Our initial testing went very well with about 30 employees. We are now ready, Brittany and I worked for two days in my office straight, and we prepared, again, it's about 400 employees with about 30 columns. So all of that data, we're ready to now upload, start uploading next week, so that then we can test 400 employees. That's really, really important, but accuracy for us is the key for both the business perspective, business office, and from the resource perspective. And that's going to be all around base pack. We know that people take on separate additional positions, whether it's subbing for a teacher, as a teaching assistant, helping out in cafeteria duty. We know that our teachers also do quite a bit of work on claim forms, and we, on average, we average about 400 claim forms in the business office every two weeks of payroll. So we're hoping to decrease that immensely and make it a more automated process. But again, we're making sure that we're having accurate and having a database that's, you know, kept up is going to be important. So I'm thrilled to tell you that we were able to finish it, write it during Christmas break, so the additional time was helpful, but also really looking forward to working with the business department over the next two weeks as we start testing that. We hope that with a smaller number of 12-month employees come July 1st, that that would be the ideal opportunity to roll this out. It'll help us get our practices of payroll down, it'll help us be able to look at just a smaller number of hourly employees and find where our weaknesses are, where our strengths are. And so again, really looking forward, because I think if we could accomplish this monumental task, I think we could give Adam's Excel spreadsheets some relief. And also, people really have found that the accessibility of being able to check in on their phone, you know, with bus drivers is another area. They actually have like iPads where they can swipe in with their badge, and we know that drivers are so unique, because one red light or two red lights may cause them to work 10 to 15 additional minutes. So we've got a plan in place for that as well. So our normal employees, about 75, 85% of our employees that are hourly, they work a consistent schedule every day, but we know that we need to do something unique with our bus drivers, and we think we're ready to do that. So I just wanted to make sure that you had that update, and then again, if you have any questions, those are me, happy to answer them.
Anything else for Mr. Dale? All right, Mr. Bays.
It has detected, like Matt said, it has been a great endeavor, the business HR office working together, really moved that initiative forward. We put a lot of time and effort into it, and we're starting to see the light at that end of the tunnel, so it's pretty exciting stuff. So yesterday, I had a conversation with our Director of Transportation, Matt Schultz, and he alerted me to a training that he, his bus operations supervisors, and his mechanics led. And it just sparked an interest in me, I said, that's something I'd like to share with the Board of Education. So I asked him to write up a quick summary of the training, and I just wanted to share with you, because I thought it was kind of unique, and I thought it was interesting. So as you know, may or may not know, every bus driver has to do a pre-inspection of the bus before they go out on the run and start picking up kids. So that happens every single day with every single bus and every single driver. So we've had a lot of new transportation employees, and so the mechanics set up a bus with about 15 predetermined issues that they caused on the bus. And then they brought in two groups of 10 newer transportation bus drivers to go through that pre-inspection as a team, and see if they could identify all 15 of those items. So some of the items were, they had very low tread on one of the tires, they had a loose lug nut on one of the tires, they had put some fluid under the bus, they had a missing insurance car, they had a fire extinguisher that was outdated, it was expired, they had a light not working on the stop-arm camera, and they had an emergency buzzer not working when one of the emergency windows were open. So that just gives you a little bit of the breadth of things that a driver has to look at before they go out on the road to pick up students. They had a second, and that was led by one of our mechanics for that. They had a second bus that was up on a lift, and one of the mechanics explained to everybody there about the air brakes, and the air tanks under the bus, and the emergency parking brake. Those are all things on a bus that obviously have become very important, but the bus drivers were able to see exactly how the braking system worked, and when issues arise, why that tank did not hold air, and therefore the brakes did not work. So another great learning opportunity for our new drivers to see that. And then as a follow-up, they had two very senior special education bus drivers. It was Heather Ledoux and Chana Clay, and they talked about different things, and started transporting special needs students, some of the equipment they used. They have an automated and a manual lift system, so they went through both of those. And overall, Matt said, it was just a really great training exercise. I thought it was really neat, kind of outside-the-box thinking on how they went about training it, rather than sitting in a classroom just listening to it. They made it more hands-on and interactive for the drivers. So I thought that was a really cool idea, and I wanted to share that. And that's all I have for the comments.
How did they do?
They did very well. That was very impressive, yeah. I don't know if everybody got every single item, but then they debriefed after, and they were able to walk through each of those items to talk about, to reinforce, you know, what is needed. So they did a nice job.
All right, anything else? All right, we have no public comments, so we're moving on to old business. I'm looking for a motion to table old business due to lack of enough board members to approve. Add second by Stephanie, any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. All right, we're going to do approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Once again, I'm looking for a motion to table that approval until we have more people present. I make that second, Terice, any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Hopefully, we can get everybody healthy and back in two weeks for our next meeting. Board member reports. Budget, last week, I was able to go to the budget meeting at the high school. I wasn't able to get over to the middle school, and the music block got moved, but there's this, they all start to copy each other with their process, I think, so like, Mr. D'Amico, Mr. Doctor Green, and then even Mr. Legault, they do all of this pre-work through email, it's all very transparent. But you get to these meetings, and everybody is so, I mean, it goes to culture, I think, a little bit, right? They're all so very flexible and willing to give and take, and they work well together. So there's not a whole lot that needs to be hashed out by the time everybody gets in the room. So I think high school's done, middle school was basically done too. And like I said, with music, there wasn't going to be a whole lot to hammer up too. So I just, once again, think it speaks well to the culture we have here, that all of these adults can work collaboratively to make these decisions. What about?
See, for me, I did Northwood and athletics, and they had one meeting each, and mostly they're going to be ramping up and not a need for a second meeting.
Village meeting is coming up at the end of the month, and I will be attending that. They already had one, and I couldn't make that one. But again, agreed that they're already well ahead of what needs to be done. And quickly, because I missed the December meeting, I just wanted to say how much I enjoy our, all the chorus concerts and the band concerts. Our music department is absolutely phenomenal, and I know I wasn't alone, sitting out there with all the parents enjoying it, so thank you very much.
I haven't been here the last two board meetings, so I apologize, I haven't seen some of you, had a few family events going on, but I have still been attending my Monroe County School Board Association meetings, mostly a lot of legislative meetings, because we're ramping up into budget season. So I've been doing a lot of the, a lot of the forums to get ready for some advocacy. I know I'm going to Albany in March to advocate for money for our district. I'm also going to the Legislative Breakfast in February, and there's just been a lot of preparation with position papers and such throughout the helm to get ready for that, so I've been focused on that. I have been to a District Operation Committee meeting, and I will plan on attending the upcoming Safety Committee meeting on the 28th. And I just wanted to say, I didn't get a chance to say this because I missed the December meeting, but the play was fantastic, Anna Green Gables at the end of November was absolutely fantastic, we enjoyed it, it was really well done, and the theater department did such a fabulous job there.
I was able to attend several sporting events, went to a modified basketball game before the meeting today. I was also able to attend a transportation budget meeting. It's the first time I was in the transportation building. And kudos to Matt Schultz and his team, the culture that exists in that building, people are smiling, they're happy to be there, they work hard, everybody was running in a thousand different directions, ensuring that obviously students were arriving to school and getting transported safely. So very organized, very on top of it. So kudos to Matt Schultz and his team, and the cabinet level staff here. It was great to see, it was great to see the facility too, at the first time.
Moving on to new business consent with the addendum. This runs all the way to the very end, past, I believe. All right, do I have a motion for a group to approve the consent portion of the meeting?
So will.
All right, do I have a second? Terice?
Yep.
Any discussion on the consent portion? All in favor? Five oh. That's with the addendum. All right, that brings us to the end of our meeting, and we'll reconvene again in two weeks. All right, we're going to adjourn.
So will.
And a second? Terice again.
We just don't want to leave, yes.
All in favor? Five oh. Thank you.